I'd like to call our meeting to order. This is Cascade Township Zoning Board of Appeals. Please note that all of our members are in attendance today. You please stand and give the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
You have a motion to approve the current agenda?
Moved second.
Moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 11, 2023 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting.
Moved approved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We would like to acknowledge any visitors and those wishing to speak on non-agenda items. And the comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. Just so you know, we will get into public hearing on each of the three items that are on the agenda tonight. So this, uh, this portion is for non-agenda items only. So anybody who would like to come up and speak? Okay, no one comes forward. Okay, like to address Article Six, Case Number 23-3759 Dykstra.
Okay, we have an application from Ron Dykstra. He's seeking a variance to build a boathouse on a vacant parcel. Uh, this parcel's on Thornapple River Drive located at 2768, just across from his other property where his home resides at 2769 Thornapple River Drive. Um, the parcel is separate from his parcel where his home is, which means that this is then a vacant parcel, which would require a variance to have an accessory building as we require per ordinance to have a primary residence first, um, before an accessory building or boathouse is built. Um, the applicant is essentially looking to know what he can build, but presented, um, here a boathouse that is about forty by thirty. He has been notified that that would require a special use permit, um, because it exceeds eight hundred and thirty-two square feet. Um, the setbacks on the property you can see on the right-hand image show that he needs to be fifty feet off of Thornapple River Drive, which puts him pretty close to the water, which is why he's seeking the boathouse so that he can store a boat, um, and have direct access for storage. The other note I wanted to make is that, you know, he would have to pursue uh, proper permitting for building from Eagle and, um, DEQ and, um, work with, uh, his flood zone determination. Uh, the findings of fact, um, it, the exceptional or extraordinary conditions that are inherent to the property in question that do not apply generally to the other nearby properties in the same zoning district when looking at this. Um, he does have a small parcel along the river separate from his, but we, um, did discuss his option to combine the parcels and be able to build by right without needing a variance. Um, the applicant, um, is not necessarily seeing exceptional or extraordinary conditions, besides that the parcel is really uniquely shaped and small, making it, uh, harder to meet setbacks. Um, but then, uh, looking at if this is the minimum variance, I would still say that he could build on the property combining the parcels and still not needing that variance. The other findings that we consider, the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Um, we haven't seen specific drawings and building plans, um, from the builder, so I would, uh, refer to him for questions on specifically what he's looking to build in this boathouse. Uh, the the ability to say if that this would be injurious to the neighbors is hard to turn, hard to determine because we haven't seen all of the specific plans, but we do have, um, height restrictions for accessory buildings. Uh, and with his proposed ten-foot setback, he would not be able to exceed fourteen feet um, with a boathouse. And the final finding that we consider is that the condition or situation on the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or recurrent of natures to make it more reasonable and practical to amend the zoning ordinance. Again, the parcel's shape makes it unique for building and, uh, could be seen as a hardship. The township sees very few boathouses come forward for a variance, um, so we wouldn't recommend amending the zoning ordinance as an alternative. Um, so in considering all of those items, the staff recommendation is that the variance would be denied because the applicant has an option to build without needing a variance.
Members of the zoning board have questions for Madison.
Madison, you said this is two separate parcels?
His parcel along the river
is connected to his
is separate from his parcel across the street of Thornapple River Drive, so his home is across the street. Pardon?
Physically touching?
Correct. They're separate parcels.
What's separating them?
The street Thornapple River Drive.
The street is an easement over it. So it's just a sixty-six foot right-of-way, correct?
No, they have different parcel numbers.
Right, but their property lines physically touch. They can then adjacent to his homestead?
Yes.
Okay. So it is a J Street? Not across, I'm not saying across the street because the street is just a right-of-way on top of it. It's a public easement over the property. If that property or if that road was abandoned and the right-of-way by the county was nullified, his two parcels, parcels touch each other. You're, are you, right, the county road commission does not own the dirt under the road. They only own the right-of-way. Which means that the two parcels do in fact touch.
Okay, yes.
But they're separate parcels.
Yes, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Okay. To date, has the township noted any physical improvements to the property?
To the vacant parcel?
Correct.
Improvements, meaning?
Any changes to the property?
Yes.
Okay. Has that been permitted through anything at this moment?
Not by the township and not that we have seen.
Other questions for Madison?
None for me.
All set. Uh, I'd like to ask the representative, the owner, to please step forward and present their case. State your name and your address, please, when you come forward.
Yeah, my name's Ron McCollum and I'm helping Ron Dykstra with this. I originally was kind of involved with that piece of property. And I found Wayne Visbain actually has done a plan. And, uh, and I, to me, it's like it's like perfect for, uh, for that piece of property and, and it's kind of perfect for the, the village of Cascade. It's like something you'd see in Bucks County, Pennsylvania. And, uh, and I told Ron, I tipped him off on it, you know, years, quite a few years ago, that it'd be really awesome to have that on the Thornapple River. And it could be used multi-purpose. It could be a boathouse and it could be, you know, a small, you know, you could walk across the street and spend your night on the river in a couple small bedrooms and, uh, and then plus it probably would be one of the most, most photographed buildings in Cascade Township. As you can see it from the bridge and you can see it from the road. And, uh, but I, I just thought if it was implemented exactly the way Wayne, it would be a kind of a treasure for the township. And, uh, but anyways, that's that's, that's, uh, I think it's, it's more of, uh, and even right now Ron's cleaned up the property and it's, it's better than it was and he's getting a lot of people complimenting him on what he's done to improve it and you can see the river. There's so much of the river that you can't see. You know, and, and at least he's opened it up so people driving by can see it. And if this was built, you know, this would be a, you know, you're coming from Cascade Road and you'd be driving by and you'd see this beautiful building and, and the site. So I think it'd be a, a real asset to the community.
Is Ron Dykstra here tonight?
Yeah, he's right here.
Ron?
Nice to meet you guys. Um, the other reason I would like to do that is obviously I have the street between my house and this property. And as you know, you were there tonight. It's very busy. So when I have grandkids over and we're down by the water and they have to go to the bathroom. I, you know, obviously somebody's got to walk them across the street. It's a fairly dangerous street. Um, I almost lost one of my granddaughters last year, which I know Cascade Road has claimed a few. Um, so that's part of the reason I've kind of pushed it a little bit is I'd like to have some bathroom on that side of the street that can allow someone to go to the bathroom without having to cross that street, which at times it gets pretty busy. So, and I've talked to all the neighbors. Everybody's like, everything you've done has been great. We have no, I had no rejections from anybody. I talked to a couple of the people that have done the other boathouses down the river. They said that they got a complaint because I sent pictures of their places. I just said, I just kind of want the same kind of thing that you had. You know, down by the water. You know, I said, I'm not asking for something that's special, but there's multiple ones in the past year that have been put up. And, uh, and some of them don't even have boats in them. Which I kind of drew attention to that and I asked if they ever go back and check these things after they're built. And they said, no. And so I took pictures. I didn't complain, you know, I said, I'm not complaining about it. I just want something comparable to what they have. You know, we're still in America. So that's, that's my, my just of that.
Questions for Mr. Dykstra by the board members?
Um, sure. Um, Mr. Dykstra, you mentioned, I think somewhere here you're a builder?
Yeah.
So you're familiar with obviously the procedures of construction?
Yeah.
Um, a couple of questions for yours, your statements here. So a bathroom, is, is it not sufficient to have a, a portage on on that side of the road then?
You guys want to see a portage on out there by the street?
I'm just
Ask the township?
Just asking a question.
Okay. Well, I've had people complain about them on job sites, so if that'd be a permanent fixture that you want out there by the street, I don't think you're going to like that. And I purposely, a lot of people don't like going in portages.
Okay. Second question from a seller's perspective, are, are you aware of the photos that we were given? Part of
I probably took those.
Okay. I, I see a silt fence on some of this, but on some of the raw dirt photos, I don't see any silt fence and I see
Is that on my property or is that?
It would appear that it's your property.
Can I come up and see it?
Yeah, you're more than welcome to. I see my concern is that the photos on the lower third of the paper there though, with the rocks being placed and exposed dirt. Looks like it's
That's an old mineral cave with the, uh, soil erosion.
Okay.
And they always pull soil erosion permits.
So there's a soil erosion and an eagle permit on the property?
No.
Okay.
I, I can throw that out because I'm not
All right. No, it's one next to the other.
They came up many times and said, oh, this is
Okay, so is that something you can get ahold of? Maybe?
I could put it through.
Okay, the soil erosion, the eagle permit?
I still have copies.
Other questions from board members for Mr. Dykstra? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
I'm moving on to public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now open for public hearing. You can come up and, uh, state your support or objection. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Uh, yeah, Christopher Bingham, 2845 Cascade Springs Drive. I strongly object, uh, the proposed variance. We basically, we live across from that property and the other side of the river. Um, this significantly and negatively impacts the view of the river and our riverside of all the surrounding properties. We paid a premium for this view. Expect to enjoy that view going forward. This is also a really narrow section of the river, which causes many problems. The depth is ankle height and on the side, on that side of the river, it's not even suitable for boats. I thought we were proposing a boathouse. This looks like a huge residence. Um, I would assume they'd have to dredge the river to actually get a boat in there. My kayak is bottomed out over there. It's literally ankle deep and rocks there. Um, given it's narrow, a boathouse would cause danger to kayakers trying to navigate through. I don't know if you know that section, but it's pretty, pretty narrow. Um, especially in the springtime, the river is really strong. Um, and someone could get trapped or caught into that shelter, into that non-sheltered area. Also, the water depth being so low, there's a ton of birds and wildlife. We live right across to it. We see it. They typically actually are in that part of the river to feed and it's an important part of their food. Um, additionally, I observed all of the modifications to this property. Every single inch of land was modified, including the river edge. This raises concerns about compliance with Eagle and DEQ. I would be surprised that there is a permit um, and regulations of validity of any of the permits. Allowing construction of a boathouse at this location would exasperate the negative environmental, environmental impacts already caused by the alterations. I'm concerned that if this variance is granted, the property owner may push the limits of which is allowed, even further contributing to the negative impact of the natural beauty of the river, uh, and ecology. To summarize, this is why we have rules and they need to be followed. If we let everyone do this, the riverside would have a completely different look. Thank you.
One question. In order to make a boathouse functional, you have to have water deep enough to get the boat in and out.
Correct.
Would it have to be dredged at that point in order to get the boat in?
Yes, I'd say, I would say yes.
Other questions by board members? Thank you. Other members of the public like to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is David O'Donoghue. I live at 2885 Cascade Springs. Um, I'm across the river from the property. Uh, we are, uh, between the property and Cascade Road Bridge. Um, I do have some concerns about the boathouse. Before I start, you know, generally speaking, I believe that property owners should be able to do whatever they want with their property as long as it's within compliance of the law and it isn't any kind of a nuisance. But in this case, what's being proposed is I think going to impact the Thornapple River. And you know, a lot of us, those of us who are fortunate enough to live on that river, we have to keep in mind that we don't own it. We have repairing and rights, but we also have a responsibility to, um, maintain the beauty of the river. Make sure we don't do anything that interferes with other people's use of the river and certainly doesn't impact our neighbors. My, my primary concern is that a twelve-hundred square foot boathouse is just out of step with the character of that neighborhood and, um, the nature of the river at that location. The house next door to the property only has an eight-hundred-and-ninety-six square foot footprint. The house further upstream is only seven-hundred-and-twenty square feet. In fact, every house on the west side of that river between Mr. Dykstra's property and the bridge are all smaller than twelve-hundred square feet, except for one. Um, in addition, the footprint, we do need to consider the height. You know, the water along that, uh, stretch of river changes considerably, often dramatically. Um, because of the, uh, our, our, um, proximity to the Cascade Dam. Just last month, uh, the river rose four feet in just three days. So the, the boathouse is going to have to be built high enough to accommodate a lift that allows the owner to raise it above the potential water line, uh, with the varying flow of the water. Um, in addition, the current is always often strong throughout the year. I saw, this is the first time I saw the, the rendering. I don't know if that's really what is being considered, but I'm not convinced that that would work. I don't think with the current as strong as it is throughout the year, that you're going to be able to dock a boat in a dock or in a boathouse that's perpendicular to the current. Your bush is going to be washed downstream. Um, it's going to have to be parallel to the stream. Now, if you go further down the river and look at boathouses, the large boathouses um, that are on and near the properties owned by the DeVosses and Van Andals, they're generally perpendicular to the river, but the river is very calm there. Also, they, they are set back. They don't extend into the river. If you build anything there that's going to be parallel to the river and all the docks that we have along there are generally parallel to the river, you're going to stick out quite a ways. I mean, you're going to stick out a bit. Twelve-hundred feet seems like it's going to stick out quite a ways. Um, the, finally, I think that the township can, should consider the long-term implications of whatever is built there. Um, you know, these, these aren't the wide calm water areas down by the, uh, Camelback Bridge and beyond where maybe a twelve-hundred square foot house, uh, boathouse makes sense. Um, I read somewhere once that this stretch of river between the Cascade Dam and those first islands um, is the only stretch between the two dams where the river is approximately the same size, um, and character that was before the Ada Dam was built. Uh, that part of the river has been rocky and swift and changes level and it's been doing that long before I and anyone else bought property there and hopefully will be like that long after we leave. But that's only going to happen if we work together. Even assuming the owner builds a sturdy and a beautiful structure, if it sticks out into the water in any amount of waves, it's going to take a beating by the river there. Um, and even assuming he maintains it and repairs it regularly, at some point, he will sell or hi- his heirs will inherit it. And we can only hope that the future owners will be able to repair it, uh, maintain it, uh, in, in a, in an acceptable manner. So in closing, I'm, generally my concern is twelve-hundred square feet, it's going to look very much out of place in that neighborhood. And I think it can, it can potentially become a very large, uh, dilapidated eyesore over the decades if no one's really caring for it. Given the turbulent nature of the water there, I just think there are other less intrusive options to, to dock a boat.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donoghue. Anybody else from the, uh, public like to come up and, uh, give their name and address?
I'm Nancy Banster. I'm at 2779 Thornapple River Drive. The picture's not up anymore, but we're that itty-bitty strip between the blue roof line you saw and where the proposed variance is being asked for. Um, so I can give a little bit more of like a ground level perspective. Um, I won't go on, on about the many wonderful reasons other people already shared as to why this is not a good idea, but I will confirm we have a small dock there, canoe and two kayaks and we as well have a hard time getting those up to our dock, which is why it's built up far enough for us to then be able to park it there, lift it and move it in. Um, lots of rocks. I can't imagine it wouldn't require some significant changes to the, the riverbed to make anything like that happen. And again, I'm not sure a boat could even get through once it was built. Um, I will also just share, it's a really beautiful property, or at least it once was. It was very natural. It was very special. I agree. It was very different than what you say downriver. Um, and it had a feel that I, at least I know our family chose and enjoyed when we first moved in about ten years ago. Um, and I wouldn't agree that what changes have been made were desired or enjoyed or appreciated. If anything, I feel a lot of trees were cut down that I think really changed the look of the feel of that space and if anything, stopping where we're at before making more changes would be what I would propose. Um, and I will also say I have kids. They're young. They were four and one when we moved there. And we go back and forth across the street, no problem. They've been, um, taught over the years to do so safely. So they can even do it on their own now as an eleven and fourteen-year-old. So although I appreciate facilities are important when you have young children, there are easier ways to make that happen. Um, we encourage our kids to use the river in that way too. So I think there's a couple of options there that don't involve building a building that I agree has no, no space in that part of the river and wouldn't really fit the cascade view.
Thank you, Nancy. Anybody else from the public like to come forward? Please give us your name and address.
Uh, my name is Tom Ipple. I live at twenty-eight sixty-one Cascade Springs. We've been there twenty-two years. A couple of things. I question whether, uh, there's going to be a, uh, able to have a, uh, a septic system for a bathroom on that small parcel. Uh, because it's very close to the river. I don't know what you're going to do. Maybe there's some sort of composting toilet he can use, but, um, I would question that. The, the other thing I want to mention is that, uh, Mr. Dykstra has already changed the riverfront in, in front of this property so that he can pull a pontoon boat in there and a, a fishing boat. Uh, he moves some rocks around and puts some extra rocks in the river so that it would, uh, slow down the current. So, so it'd go, go around his boats instead of right at them. So he's already on his own, taking care of uh, what the previous commenter said about the trouble with getting the boat in and out. He's already made it possible to move the, and I don't know whether he had permission for that. I know the other thing, the third thing I want to mention is that, uh, Mr. Dykstra said that he's got nothing but positive comments about the changes he's made. Well, he's got negative comments from myself, from my next-door neighbors. Um, uh, we have called the DEQ, which used to be DEQ. Um, they chose not to pursue this, uh, complaint, but we, we've been complaining about this with some regularity. Um, the, uh, entire riverbank was changed. Uh, multiple trees cut down, probably a dozen or more, uh, were just wiped out. And, uh, then, uh, Mr. Dykstra, I talked to him one day. He, he kind of bragged to me that he had brought in twenty tons of rock to put on this parcel. Um, and I watched the, the people do it. The other thing I want to say is that, um, I used to sit and watch the river from my, uh, land. And there were a few occasions when deer would walk on his side of the river and, uh, between Thornapple River Drive and the river. And, uh, they, I've never seen one since he changed his bank. So the deer have been affected already. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ipple. Anybody else from the public like to make comments? Please give us your name and address.
My name's Roger Hill. Uh, I live at twenty-eight seventy-five Cascade Springs, next, next to Tom. Um, my, my essential concern is the boathouse idea. Um, pontoon or not, boats become larger, boats become powerboats, boats become more difficult to manage and maneuver. There is no way I've had, um, multiple boats living where I do on the other side of the river, on the channel. I know how, how shallow that, that side of the river is. On the channel, I know how how shallow that that side of the river is. And it seems if we go down this road of allowing a boathouse that would accommodate. Boats of one sort or another, which might very well be powerboats. Then to accommodate a powerboat on that side of the river, you are going to have to dredge the river. And you have to dredge quite a lot of the river because the channel is actually on the opposite side and it's only about ten feet wide. So once you've got powerboat there and dredged, now what happens to the river? And what happens to my property and what happens to the properties down there and particularly what happens to the island? As the current changes by the dredging, so I'm very concerned that. Allowing the boathouse that's capable of of putting a boat in that's big enough to need a, need a dredge. Is going to be a completely bad idea down the road for everybody on this, both sides of the river and particularly on that side of the river. It's going to be much faster current all of a sudden. Thank you.
Questions, any questions for Mr. Hill? One question I have. What kind of distance are we talking about between that potential boathouse front? And the channel where it's deep enough, are we talking fifty feet, hundred feet?
I would guess it's probably thirty, maybe from the shore over. There's a on the opposites, on the, on the side opposite me towards Mr. Dykstra's property. There is an edge to the channel of rocks. It's been there for ages, it's a great fishing spot along there. And then the channels on our side, channels maybe seven feet deep where we are and I'm not, I haven't, haven't checked in a long time. It's very narrow, it fluctuates in size, once you get to the island, it makes a complete forty-five degree turn that you must make. And if, if you don't make that turn, you're in two feet of water. You're on the sandbar, if you go straight through, you hit a rock, big rock. There was a big um, big tree there that uh fronts the rock, but. Once you, once you start looking at that area now. We used to wave that in shorts and tennis shoes and fish the, the small bass there. And you could do that almost all the way over the channel. So it's two thirds of the river over to the channel that you could actually walk me there. And and the most it was two, two, three feet deep when there's water coming over there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Anybody else like to come up and make comments? Mr. Dykstra?
Have you, free uh help to me?
Sure.
What the guys asked about. I mean, ever heard of city water and sewer? Those are city water and sewer, so that's just a natural. Way to, you know, I don't need a septic system, but I have city water and sewer. So that takes care of that. I didn't ask to dredge the river for any means. I have a boat and a pontoon. I'm very often on the river with my boat and my pontoon, I've never had an issue. It's a lot calmer on that side of the river as far as current than in the, in the river, it just makes sense, most of the water's flowing on that side. On my side, it's a lot less current. So I, I'm not trying to get anybody excited about putting a great big boat in there. I'm just asking for a boathouse. It doesn't, you know, you guys don't specify what size boat. Unless you have specifications, but I've talked to some other people down the river and they said the same thing. What are the specifications for a boathouse? What classifies a boathouse as a boathouse?
One question, yeah, you modified the area between Thorn Apple Drive and the waterfront. And have you extended into the water with the, with the rock?
No, I kept the front where it was. I bring, I brought in some bowlers from the UP. There's nothing wrong with, I don't think, bringing in landscape, I mean, there's a lot of people on that river that have landscaped their properties. I don't see an ordinance that says you can't landscape the property.
But you haven't pushed out into the river at all?
No. I followed the river shoreline the way it was.
Okay, and you had a permit for, from EGLA?
I, I can, I can bring that to her from Kent County. I have soil and erosion, they've never had any complaints.
Where do you keep your pontoon boat?
That's right out front.
Right out in front?
Yep. It's off to the one side. And then also I had somebody, um. So on the township, so zoning, what is the zoning to put in a dock? How far from the property line? Do you have to have a dock? I can help you, it's ten feet. When you have a ten-foot easement. What size dock can you put on that property? It's not a trick question.
That's a question for our staff.
Okay. And we can probably answer that out of public hearing would be more appropriate at time. Okay. Any other questions or?
No, thank you, Mr. Dykstra. Anybody else like to come forward?
Just some comments on the pontoon boat. It's, we saw him like bringing the pontoon boat onto the property. And they actually had to use like a two by four to ram it and get it up onto the property. It's literally been sitting on the, on the property for like over two years tied to a tree. I don't think we've seen him once take the boat out, so it's very shallow there, maybe the pontoon boat's sitting there? Um, and then just all over with the house, this, this, we're talking about a boathouse. I'm looking at a house with bedrooms and a kitchen and a bathroom. This is crazy.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Your name again?
I'm sorry, my name is David O'Donoghue.
Okay.
Um, what I'm looking for. Yeah, this is the photo that was in the packet. Um, now, you know, I don't know for sure, all I can, all I can tell is what I can see from across the river. But to the issue of was any land extended into the river? If we look at the bottom photograph, which is an older photograph. And compare it to the current one, you can see where the shore bows out where there was no bowing out to begin with. And this is actually an even more updated photo than was published on the website earlier this week. Um, because that one had some tree covers, this one looks um like it's been done in the winter, so. I, I'm just going by what I can see on this photograph. And I don't know for sure, I didn't take measurements, but it certainly looks by this photographic evidence that. There was some type of addition made to the land spaces that moves into the river.
So it's projecting slightly into the river?
All I'm doing is looking at this photograph that's in your packet. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donoghue. Other comments? Your name and address, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm Tom Ipple, twenty-eight sixty-one Cascade Springs. Um, I sat for several hours um on a bench on my riverbank. Watching the rock work being done, I think this was two or three years ago. And I, with my own eyes, saw people moving rocks into the river by hand. And some with uh a bobcat kind of thing. Um, I'm saw them lifting rocks and putting them in the water.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I'm Molly Walkout, now lived on the same house. Just north of this property. Uh, by about three houses, I believe, depends on how you look at it. But I've lived there for forty-seven years and love the river. I love the area we live in, it's always been quiet, peaceful and. The, the, the lighting um has always been uh comparable to what you would like to, I would like to see. Uh, just very calm and recent, the last uh few years. Um, I, I have, I'm looking at lights through the trees. If the river isn't, my opinion is nowhere near as peaceful as it used to be. And like I said, forty-seven years is a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Walkout, any other comments? Yes, ma'am. Name and address?
Mary Apple, twenty-eight sixty-one Cascade Springs. I'll be brief, but. This man has essentially taken a gift of nature. And if you look into his river property, he's made it an atrocious. Sight with all the rocks and all of us who lived across the river from him had to put up. With trucks and um bringing those rocks in and we woke up early every morning to the sound of beep 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 beep. And we don't trust him to um respect nature. Or to care for her, his, his neighbors and. We're sick about what he's done and we will not be happy if he's able to make. This grand plan of the river, so please deny this.
Thank you, Mrs. Ipple. Other comments? Please come forward.
I moved to close public hearing, support.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Board members like to uh discuss or have any questions for staff?
Um, personally, I'd like to see. Some follow-up with regard to that Eagle permit, um, having done. Local projects and dealing with the state eagle as well as the drain commission. And then seeing these photos, um, and you do have these of record in the, in the file, is that correct? For staff? Okay. I, I do see a severe problem with the work that's protruding out into the waterway. I, I know from personal experience and having talked to the authorities with the state. That something like this is, is definitely not a permissible action, it's, it, it may have received a permit. Um, but I'd like to see some follow-up by the, the state with Eagle in regards to the condition of this property.
Madison, you did contact Eagle, EGLA?
We have not contacted Eagle directly about it, we just received these uh images this week in public comment.
Okay, other board members have comments?
Yeah, there's several comments here, um. Getting directly to staff's recommendation to deny the uh, the variance. The findings of fact note that there are really no reasons for a variance and probably more importantly. We always look to the residents' input nearby and there are injurious claims being made by the residents. And that's always something what you look for i- in every case. Um, there appears to be negative environmental impact and that's, you know, not just in the eyes of the beholder, but you know, that's. Seems fairly evident, or there could be, and, and most importantly. Um, we and the zoning board of appeals always look about setting precedent. And um, we're very, very conscientious of setting a precedent, and I think this could uh set a very bad precedent. Um, given of what we've heard, and with that, I make a motion to deny the variance per the reasons. Just given and, and what staff had uh provided.
Can I have a second?
I will support that.
Any further discussion about the motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved, the application is denied. We'll now move on to article seven. This is case number twenty-three thirty-seven sixty. Jipping? Thank you all for coming.
We can zoom in on that if we need to see numbers. Okay, we have the jippings at seven, 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 nine Silverthorne Drive. Um, they did uh come for us at ZBA before to uh. Keep their existing barn on their property. Um, after the barn was evaluated, they uh learned it was no longer. Fit for. Um, being there, essentially they had an inspection done that showed it's not. It can't be fixed, it has to be replaced. So I have those inspection documents that were also included in your document, if you want to see any of those specifically. Um, but that is what led them to come back here today to request a variance to replace that barn in their technical front yard. Um, so this barn is located uh along Butrick, you can see it from there. Um, they had recently done some parcel. Uh, combinations, so the full parcel. Has frontage on two streets, uh access on two streets, um. That is why it's considered the front yard along Butrick as well. Uh, the existing barn is two hundred and one feet from the property line on Butrick. Um, and on the side property line, uh, it would be ninety-two point eight feet. And they are proposing to keep it in the same location when rebuilding. Um, the applicant is aware that the square footage of the barn would require a special use permit, so they are prepared to pursue that. Um, if approved tonight. Um, when we considered the criteria, um, our findings of fact here. Um, you know, this house is located in the very furthermost northwest corner. So any other buildings uh that would be built down the road or be replaced as they are applying for today. Would be considered in the front yard because they would all be in front of the house, which is how we determine our yards. Um, whether it's front, side or rear, um. So that is a circumstance or condition that made it hard for them to be able to build in compliance with our ordinances. Um, and the applicant is not requesting to change any of those setbacks, so we would still consider it. A minimum variance if they were rebuilding it as the same size. Um, the other criteria we looked at or uh if it was injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Um, and in considering the variance that they were recently granted, um. And that the barn has been there for over a hundred years, we found that. Things wouldn't necessarily be changing and that it would not be injurious. Um, and that it is also set back, there is a home. Let me move my microphone over with me. Uh, there's a home on the property. But it still sits in front of where, sorry, there's a home within the parcel. It's surrounded by their parcel, but the home. Still sits in front of where this barn is, so it's not like it's sitting in front of the home when you drive by. Um, so that was another reason why we didn't consider it to be injurious. Um, we are recommending that the variance could be approved. Um, with the following conditions, that the accessory building is not used to run a business or used as living space. Uh, that any outdoor lighting proposed on the building would be uh meeting our Cascade Township standards. And that there was one item with the building. That we had yet to confirm with the builder, just to confirm it was twenty-two feet in height, and so I'm making that a condition. Uh, just so it doesn't get missed, um, that they do not exceed that height for an accessory building.
Is that to the ridge or to the median?
Midpoint of the roof.
Midpoint, okay. You board members have questions for Madison?
Madison, you, you, you mentioned the one condition that is not be um used for living quarters, is that been made clear to the? Madison, you, you mentioned the one condition that is not be used for living quarters. Is that been made clear to the? To the applicant?
Yes, the applicant has also agreed to these conditions.
Okay.
One question. The other two buildings looks, one looks like it's a house close to Butrick. And one down near the south property line. Are those demolished now?
Yes, a condition of their previous variance was that they had to remove the existing home and other structures on the parcel besides the barn. And I confirmed this past week that those have all been removed. So just the barn sits there.
Okay. You getting any comments from the neighbors?
I have not received any comment on this case, no.
Any other questions for Madison?
Thank you.
The owner or the owner's representative, please come forward and give us your name and address.
Good evening. Sam Kilburg on behalf of the Jippings. Address is three nine five seven seven Woodward Avenue, Suite three hundred, Bloomville, Michigan, four eight three zero four. And as Madison pointed out correctly, quite frankly, we're here before you to ask that we can build a barn in the same location as the existing barn currently sits. This came about last year. I was before you last year seeking a variance for this historical barn. We were combining the property. We were going to have to tear it on all the buildings as shown on the photograph. And we asked that we could leave the, the building, the barn in place. We've been through a couple of contractors and really quite frankly, what this comes down to is a safety issue. We've included the inspection from West Michigan Home Inspectors. They've inspected the property and you know, the recommendation we're getting from professionals is that it has to be torn down. So we would just like to build a barn in the same location as the current barn. The property has been combined now. So as, as Madison pointed out, it's kind of unique to this parcel. It is technically in the front yard. So we do need to come before you for a variance to, to build a barn in that location. We read through and agree with everything that the staff report. As was noted, we already previously received a variance for a barn in this location. So this body has already determined that. At least the barn, currently existing barn has no negative impact on the surrounding neighboring parcels. And staff agrees that the new barn, you know, does fit the character of the area. One thing that, you know, we were happy to see. I just want to read it in the staff report is that the new barn will be built to honor its history and to better reflect the rural and agricultural nature of the applicant's neighborhood. We were happy to see that because that's exactly what the Jippings want to do. They want to build a barn that, you know, fits the character of the, of the area. So we're asked here before you to ask that you follow staff's recommendation and approve this. If you have any questions, I'm here as well as the Jippings are here as well.
Do board members have any questions?
Just again affirming that they understand that there's no living in the building.
Correct, yeah. All, all the conditions we agree with staff and we've already spoken to the builder. We're fine with all of the conditions. It's going to be built, you know, to code or to, to the ordinance requirements.
Questions?
No, thank you.
Just one comment I'd like to make as a licensed architect. I, I think the design is really outstanding, beautifully done.
I can't, I can't take credit for that, bud. Thank you.
I move going to public hearing. Support.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would anybody like to come forward and? Make comments?
I will just cause, my name's Charles Stabler. I live at two six zero six Butrick, right across the street. So I get a nice view of the field and the barn across the street. And since you hadn't heard from any of the neighbors, now you can. I'm in favor of it. I love the barn. I love looking out the window and seeing the barn. It, you know, has a lot of charm to the area. So I hate to see things torn down that have character and. Add to the, the view. So I'm, I just wanted to say I'm in favor. So I'm glad they're rebuilding. I'm sure it'll be nice. Yeah.
Anybody else like to make a comment? We have a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any discussion among board members?
I make a motion to approve the variance with staff's conditions.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favors indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay. Case number twenty-three thirty-seven sixty-one. Madison?
Okay, we have an application from Spencer Gurley. Am I saying that correctly? He is looking to get a variance to build an accessory building prior to building his home. This is a vacant parcel that's going to be built on in the near future. And he's looking to have an accessory building to store equipment in that required to prep the land for the building of his home. He is proposing a three hundred and eighty-four square foot. I have a picture of it here actually I can put up for you. Three hundred and eighty-four square feet and it will be placed what would be in the future, the rear yard of where he. Is planning to put the home. So it would be in compliance after the fact. The height is only eight feet and so ten feet from the property line is required. He's proposing it's forty-five feet. At the minimum from any of the property lines. The applicant's father-in-law owns the property nearby to the north, so. He is in support. The shed will adhere to the setbacks, as I said, once the home is built. And we talked about conditions and he has agreed to the fact that if this variance be approved, that he would. Have the home at least fifty percent complete within one year. Provide a performance bond for the removal of the accessory building if the home is not at least fifty percent complete within one year. And that amount would be a minimum of ten thousand. And that the bond would be released once the property is in compliance or the home is complete. And these are the standards that the township has set on similar variances granted to residents. So with all that in consideration, I would recommend approving it with the conditions.
Do board members have any questions for Madison?
Madison, I said, Mr. Gurley is in agreement with the conditions?
Yes, yep, I talked to him about them.
Thank you.
No other questions?
No, just no questions.
Okay, would Mr. Gurley please come forward and? Tell us a little bit about the project and the future house?
Yeah. Thank you. So the entire lot here is owned by my father-in-law. It's a homesteaded lot. So there are three. Property splits that he has. He actually lives on lot three. Lot two, my wife and I will purchase and we'll build our home on it within the next year. And lot one is for my brother-in-law to build on with his wife. So I'm doing most of the, the tree cutting and some of the site work, excavation work. So I need a place to put my tools, which is why I want to build this ahead of the primary residence. And then eventually I plan on turning this into a wood shop or an art studio. So. I think Matty did a great job of explaining it from there. So I'll leave it up to you guys for any questions.
Good way to keep the family close, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have two young ones at home too. So we're looking to offload some of the things we have as well. So.
Board members have any questions for Mr. Gurley?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Formality, but I move going to public hearing.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now open to public hearing. Anything on the monitor?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have no closed public hearing. Board members, would you like to discuss this further?
We've done a lot of variances like this in the past with almost identical conditions. So this is not an exception. This is really straightforward. So with that, I make a motion. We approve the variance.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Gurley. Thank you for coming. Okay, is there any other business?
Not for me.
I would just like to reiterate, I would like to have staff. Get a copy of that Eagle permit and make contact with Eagle staff.
Yeah.
That is concerning of the photos that there is without a doubt. A non-compliance in my mind.
I agree.
I'll second that motion. Any other business? Valerie, Lou?
Yep. Move good journey. Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
One hour.
Right.